Aloha Pumia Nakako, the March 27, 2024 Neighborhood Board Number 34 meeting is called to order. Welcome to our Makakilo Kapole Honokai Hale community forum. My name is Anthony McCalla Paris and I serve as your board chair. We are holding a hybrid meeting and we have community members here at Kapole Hale Conference Rooms A and B and online via WebEx. For order and decorum, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand or your virtual hand. Wait for the presiding officer to recognize you before speaking and please introduce yourself for the record. And remember always to address your conversation and comments to the chair. If I missed any hands online, please get the attention of my Neighborhood Board Assistant Logan Hutchison via chat. He'll make sure to throw an eraser at me and I'll, I'll get you the next time. Speakers have three minutes to comment on any item. Those giving reports this evening, there will be one and they have requested 15 minutes for the presentation. And those materials are available and circulated in our online cloud drive. Please remember to silence all of your electronic devices and keep yourself muted when on WebEx when you're not speaking. This is our community forum and everyone is asked to engage with the spirit of aloha. Be free to vigorously debate the items tonight. Remember to treat each other with respect, especially when you're advocating for your concerns. And let's honor each other by keeping to the lot at times and getting out on time. Are there any questions before we begin? Hearing none, we ask the Neighborhood Board Assistant to call the roll.
Ozler, Dudley, here.
Ferrero, here.
Kalan. Tom. Blinstone.
Eel.
Singleton.
Here.
Tala. Harris.
Eel.
We do have four of us this time, share with five of nine members.
Thank you for joining us, Mikiala. Appreciate it. With that, let's go to our city monthly reports and welcome up Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, I'm firefighter Justin Nakamine Nakapuri. Statistics for February 2024. We had fires, structure two, wildland and brush four, nuisance fires, which included fires outside a structure vehicle, three cooking, non-activated alarms, no fires, 16. Medical emergencies. There was 163 motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, one motor vehicle crash collision, 11. Mountain rescue, zero ocean rescue, zero hazardous material incidents, zero. Fire safety tip for this month is smoke alarm safety tips. Smoke alarms save lives and are an important part of a home fire escape plan. Properly installed and maintained, smoke alarms give offense, early warnings to get out quickly. Install smoke alarms inside each bedroom and outside the sleeping areas always and on every level of the home, including the basement. Try to keep smoke alarms away from kitchen or bathroom to reduce false alarms. It's good to take smoke alarms once a month, press test buttons to ensure. If a smoke alarm requires a nine volt battery, replace battery each year. Replace smoke alarm units every 10 years or sooner if they're not responding properly. Any questions?
Malo for the report, any questions from the board members, Chair recognizes board member Mick Ferrer.
Hi there, on activated alarms, I know some years back, the people with, I guess, burglar alarms, fire alarms, they had to have permits for them. Is that still in place?
Burglar alarms and fire alarms?
Yeah, for fire alarms, let's say for instance, somebody says activated alarms, no fire, there's 16 of them. Do they still have to have permits for alarms and for nuisance alarms or there are fines for that?
Or not sure, I didn't refer to Captain Seafemoes answer.
As far as I know with that type of alarm system, as far as burglar system, that comes under HPD. You do have to register and there it's on. Any questions for our false alarms? We would wanna talk to them and give specific information about that. But fire, fire department, I'm just going to go now. Fines are everything that just responding, I'm sure.
So are activated alarms calls for service then or?
Yeah, so sometimes your smoke detector or the smoke detector in the, in the facility may go off.
Okay.
Ball state and we'll come check it and maybe activated alarm that feels fires.
Right. Yeah, it's kind of a small number is why I was, I was looking, so, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the fellow board members? Are there any questions or concerns from the community at large or Honolulu Fire Department? Hearing none in person or online, malo for your report, appreciate your service. Let's welcome HPD online.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Board Members, members of the community, Corporal Pago at the Honolulu PC Department, Districtate Community PC Team. I have your crime stats for February. In February, we had 24 motor vehicle thefts, nine in our area. 23 burglaries, eight in our area, 157 thefts, 82 in our area. 49 unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, 29 in our area. There was a total of 6,244 calls for service, 2,263 in our area. That's the only thing I think I have, well, in regards to the alarms. HPD is required when you have an alarm that's being monitored, that you're supposed to register your alarm with the Alarm Tracking Bureau. When we are, when we do receive an alarm call, which is our sent to the alarm, if it's not canceled prior to the officer arriving, the officer will make a police report. It's documented. And then it's followed up by the Alarm Tracking Bureau to check to see if, just to let them know that we had an alarm go off. And for them to check to make sure that everything's working properly. There are fines assessed after so many, I'm not exactly sure how many false alarms they get. So we do encourage people that if you forget your passcode or something, you accidentally activated, be sure to call 911 as well as your alarm company as soon as possible. Let them know to cancel the alarm so the officer can be canceled before they make the police report. As far as the fire alarms, I'm not sure if, when the officers go, if it's reported as a fire alarm, whether that's documented on the same side, but again, any alarm calls that we go to, that's documented as an alarm call, it is sent to the Alarm Tracking Bureau. And I'm open for any comments or concerns.
Any questions, comments, or concerns for HPD from the board? Any such from the community at large? Hearing and seeing none, malo for the report, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's go to the next city monthly report with Border Water Supply. Is there someone with us? I do know that they submitted a written report.
I don't see them online right now.
Okay. We'll circle back later to see if they come online, otherwise, please check out the materials Border Water Supply provided in the online Google Drive. Now let's go to Mayor Rick Langiardi's office. His Director Keith Suzuki with us this evening.
Yes, hi Board, can you hear me?
Aloha.
Aloha, hi. Let's see, oh, I guess, first of all, I just wanted to thank everybody for attending. I, I was looking for board members at the Kapole Town Hall that took place last Thursday. And I, I wasn't able to find anybody before the meeting started, but once it started, I saw a number of you there. So thank you very much for attending, I found it very interesting and I hope you did so too. The next town hall is, Kapole was actually the very first town hall, the next one is going to be in Kailua. Then, let's see, I owe you folks the skyline ridership data for February. It was 93,427, that's to be compared with 91,634 for January, so slightly up. I, I think in general, it's sort of been running about there, about 90,000 give or take. Insofar as I think the only thing that I had as homework was a question about the zoo. And before I start with the written response back from DES, which is the department in charge of the zoo, I did want to announce that, if you hadn't heard, that the Honolulu Zoo came in fourth place. And I think we're all very, very proud of that award. The zoos, the question with respect to the zoo from the last meeting, I'll read it. Is this Honolulu Zoo accredited? Is the budget allocation for the Honolulu Zoo still in the neighborhood of 8 million annually? The concern is that with developing technologies like 4K television and the ability to view wild animals in their natural habitat, are there better uses for these funds? And the response from the Department of Enterprise Services, DES, is as follows. And I guess you know by now that I'm a huge fan of the zoo, so I 100% support this particular response. But the answer is, thank you for your inquiry and opportunity for us to explain the unique and invaluable role the Honolulu Zoo plays in cultivating appreciation of nature and the, and the wild for the people of Hawaii. At a time when our globe faces the greatest number of threats to ecosystems, balance, and species survival, climate change, invasion of non-native species, habitat loss, pollution, disease, increasing public awareness and action in the face of these threats is imperative. While technological advances have allowed for stunning digital recordings of the animal kingdom in the wild, there is no substitute for real life encounters with animals. Nothing can compare to the connection and empathy that occurs from being up close to animals in person, seeing, hearing, smelling them as they bring a glimpse of their wild worlds into our developed world. The Honolulu Zoo is able to present an amazing diversity of global species in real life directly to the people of Hawaii, inviting wonder and appreciation of all life forms. Moreover, the Honolulu Zoo highlights our rich biodiversity of native species which are found nowhere else on the planet. We partner with local organizations in conservation efforts to care for our land and ocean as well as rehabilitate, breed, release, and replant native species within Hawaii. The Honolulu Zoo is accredited by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, ACA, ensuring that we maintain the highest standards of care for our animals. Our operating budget in fiscal year 2024 is 8 million, 8, 8.88 million, less than three tenths of 1% of the city and county's operating budget of 3.414 billion. We believe it is some of the best spent funds in the budget. The return on investment in educating and inspiring Hawaiians people and visitors to care for the natural world and take responsible action for sustainable management of the environment and its resources is priceless. Thank you very much, that was the only question that was left with me from last week, but I'd be happy to try to answer or take back any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the report back and mahalo to the mayor for having the town hall meeting in Kapole first. Okay, are there any questions, comments from the board, Chair recognizes Vice Chair Dr. Kyony Dudley?
Yes, I'd like to know for cripples, is there any kind of motorized vehicle that run around the zoo or any, any kind of help that cripples could get to go around the zoo?
Oh, okay, I, again, I'm sorry, I do not know the answer, but we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from fellow board members? Then the chair will exercise prerogative. I have received inquiries from different people in our communities regarding the, the Covanta contract for, under the Caldwell administration in order to do ash to construction materials in order to decrease the amount of ashes goes into one model gulch. There have been raised of safety concerns, particularly if we're going to use them in playgrounds or on roads. So would it be possible for the board and our community to receive a briefing on what are the details currently of that contract by Covanta? And what are the known effects, if any, at this time regarding the construction materials under contract with the city from the ash from HR?
Thank you very much, yeah, we'll get back to you on that, thank you.
Any questions or concerns from the community at large? For the mayor's office, everybody talk to him at Kapole.
That was a wonderful meeting, I, at least personally, I thought, I learned a lot and I, I thought the community members had a lot of wonderful questions.
Okay, excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Deputy Director Suzuki, we always appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Let's, let's go now to Councilmember Andrea Tupolo or her representative. Seeing or hearing none, we'll circle back later. And now let's go to the Ompo Report from Uncle Frank Gonadio.
Yes, Mr. Chair, at this month's Citizen Advisory Committee meeting, Ompo Executive Director Mark Garrity reported that the Technical Advisory Committee recommended approval of revision 17 of the Transportation Improvement Program, or the TIP, and the Policy Board that approved the revision. The remainder of the meeting was a presentation by Dale Evans and Ryan Naka of Charlie's Taxi on how the city and county of Honolulu has a conflict of interest in fixing taxi rates because, because it provides service by the bus, skyline, and the handy van, which are referred to as transportation network companies or TNCs. Several reasons were given for why they want the deregulation of taxi rates, such as vehicle costs are up 29%, taxis must have insurance, which is not required for TNCs. On-demand 24/7 service is difficult to operate. Charlie's is the only taxi company that operates after 9:00 PM when there is no bus service for late arriving flights and visitors cannot use handy vans. Ms. Evans added that the eight passenger vans are very expensive. They only wish to change the night rates, more drivers are needed and some discounts are available. The CAC Chair Kathleen Rooney asked for more explicit information and member Ken Lavassure suggested that Charlie's create a task force to address what is best for customers. No motions were made as to support for deregulation of rates. Let me now add here that Ompo has made the TIP available for federal years 2025 through 2028 online. And I'll place, place that address in the chat and I urge you to examine it. There are 92 projects costing at over $4 billion, with non-rail projects at close to $2 billion. City and county projects exceed $1 billion with bike and pedestrian projects at $447 million, more than double the amount allocated for highways and roadways. Some examples of both are $46 million for bikeway improvements, $93 million for Phase 3 of the Salt Lake Boulevard widening, $60 million for the bicycle and pedestrian bridge over the Alawai Canal, another $90 million for the so-called Transportation Alternative Program, who are read on that complete streets, and $50 million more for capital infrastructure programs, both of them for more bicycle and pedestrian access. $50 million to upgrade roads in Kakaako and $119 million to design and install sidewalks in some areas, not ours. Needless to add, there is no mention of the Makakila Drive extension. Mahalo.
Thank you, Uncle Frank, for the thorough report, are there any questions or comments regarding the Ompo Report? From the board or from the community? Hearing none, thank you again, and now let's circle back and see if we have representatives from the Border Water Supply or Councilmember Andrea Tupolo's office for presentation.
Andrea. Hi.
Aloha, welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Neighborhood Board, thank you to all of you who came out to the Kapole Mayor's Town Hall. There were some questions asked, some answers, but anything else that you guys need me to follow up on, I'd be happy to do that. I would like to share that Resolution 2450, which is creating a new ocean safety department, has been proposed and we actually just had our second reading. So for those of you who want to continue to support that, one more round of votes and that will be on the ballot for the voters to vote for. Um, we are having our full budget hearing on Monday. So if there is anything additional that your board would like to ask me to put in the budget, I can put it in in the second round, but we only get about two rounds of edits, so you could, you still have time to send it over to me if there's specific asks. I will be sharing with you guys the ones that I put in for Kapole, so some of it has to do with Kapole Regional Park lights for the skate park, other things that we kind of went over with Mikiala, but there's still time to edit. So on Monday, I'll be able to see which one of our edits kind of stick and which ones we need to put in a new. We also did put in for the money for the stoplight at Kamaaha and Kapole Parkway, which is supposed to be coming up next year. So I just want to thank the board for being very active in the different endeavors that I have going on and I'm open for any questions you might have.
Thank you for the update, Councilmember, are there any questions or concerns from the board? Any questions or concerns from the community at large? Okay, hearing none, mahalo, and we will keep on going on. Now, we are completed our city monthly reports and we will take this time to invite up our presenter for this evening, so. Welcome, Mr. Neil Anthony Simmons of Ocean Era doing their proposal for fishing limu culture operations offshore of Ever Beach and we'll get that right on, Logan, you already got it online, good. So the floor is yours, welcome.
Hello Chair Paris, Sid, Neil Anthony Simmons is my name rather, Simmons. And Logan is going to cooperate for us here by, by moving this through this presentation. This is for a proposal for a fishing limu culture operation offshore of Ever Beach. But I thought in, in the interests of just making your community aware because of just the connection to the shoreline there, but then also we would be looking to perhaps be using Campbell Industrial Park and Koloauma Harbor as workstation, so it is germane to this Neighborhood Board. Thank you very much for the time this evening. If we click through Logan, please, as a company, I'm a biologist and all of us in Ocean Era have biological background and we look at the challenges for our planet here that we have to address. And we're marine biologists and so the, the two main ways that we think that we can start to address these challenges here, we can grow more limu and we could be growing more fish so that people can be eating more fish from less beef and pork. So that's the fundamental rationale behind what we do. We've been working at the Natural Energy Lab in Kona for the last six years on different ways to optimize the growth of a number of different limu species. We're really blessed to be working here in Hawaii where people really love their limu. Most other places in America, you gotta get a pointed stick to poke seaweed down the throat of people. Here, people will line up for a long queue for, for limu. The challenge, or the advantage of growing limu in the ocean as a biomass is you don't need any land area, you don't need any fresh water and you don't need artificial fertilizer, if you do it in the right location, you don't need any artificial fertilizer. The question then is where and how do we grow more limu? And for us, we're, we're a research and development company and we look at, at commercial scale up as being the way that we're really going to implement meaningful change. And so if we're going to do that with limu, it's food and it's feed, these are the two most obvious ways that we can get products into market, food here in Hawaii, it, it's very much appreciated. And for feed, either for, there's a couple of companies in Kona that are producing the limu kaukou that goes into cattle feed to suppress the methane, that's really important. But we're also interested in that fermenting seaweed to be able to go into poultry feed or pig feed and then also into reef fish or into shrimp diets. We've already been selling some of our sea grapes into the local KTA in Kona and it's through some of the distributors, it's coming to some of the restaurants here in Oahu and Maui. And that's one where there's a lot of market traction. Our research is, at the moment, we're all land-based, but the real scale up opportunity here is if we move out into the ocean. That's where we can get more scale and then get, get less expensive, can be more affordable. So then the other area where we work on is trying to figure out how to grow more fish. And there's three areas that we work on here, if you can click through Logan, thanks. It is developing more sustainable feeds for the so-called carnivorous fish like the kampachi or snappers or mahi mahi, we want to be able to develop diets that are less reliant on fish meal and fish oil. And then there's an obvious avenue here to a softer footprint for farming fish and that's to be able to grow more vivorous fish, fish that actually eat limu. So you could be growing the limu and then feeding it to the fish and Nanue is a, a real standout here locally. And we also think there's global opportunity for Nanue. And then also pioneering offshore farms, this one, this is something that we feel is an integral part of being able to move fish farming and limu farming out into deeper water, further offshore, we have some experience doing that. The, the new way we've been culturing this for about 10 years now in tank trials in Kona, we get a really good growth rate up to about a pound and a half in a year of culture. And they can do that when we're just feeding them a, they're an herbivore, so you can feed them the same feed that you would give to a tilapia and we get as good a growth rate there as if we're growing them on the kampachi diet or some other really rich diet. We've had some initial sales into KTA from our tank grown fish. Sorry, you can't see any of the Nanue here because it got sold out overnight by the time we got in there with the camera, the, the shelf was empty. I think that's a really good indication for the market potential for this species. Thanks Logan. So I want to give some of the, the background on us as a company, this is not our first rodeo. We've been involved in offshore aquaculture now for over 20 years. We had established the offshore operation that's down in Kona. If you've landed ever at Kona Airport and looked out onto the Makai side and seen those end-like structures, they are these submersible net pens here. And this was the first integrated offshore hatchery, offshore fish farm and hatchery in Hawaii, but we're about five years behind the buoy farm off here at Ever Beach. We ran that operation up until 2008, remember the global financial crisis, so did our investors. And they backed away, but we were able to sell it, it's continued operation with, under Blue Ocean Marocas since 2009. And they have plans now to scale up to around 2,500 tons per year, which is about the size you need to be to get to be a profitable fish farm. Scale is really important, it's the same reason why nobody runs a dairy farm with five cows. You've got to have 100, 150 cows to have a profitable dairy farm. Farming 500 tons of kampachi was great, but it was about one-fifth of the size that it needed to be to get to profitability because there's a lot of fixed costs in there. We've also, in Kona, we've had a number of demonstration projects for offshore aquaculture out in federal waters. We call these the Bellella Projects, which is that little drifting blue sail by the sea. We named it about that because the first, named it after that, the first iteration of this was a fish pen that had no anchor, it drifted around in the back of the big arm. We're not complete idiots, we did have a boat attached to it up in the left-hand side there, you can see Bill Austin's vessel that, that was out there for eight months. This was recognized by Time Magazine of one of the best inventions of the year for 2012. That was great, but what was more important for us was that it acted as a great fish aggravating device, as a fishing buoy essentially for the local fishermen. And this is something that we're striving to do, is to find synergies or collaborative opportunities between commercial and recreational fishing and aquaculture. And this was some really beautiful validation. commercial and recreational fishing and aquaculture. And this was some really beautiful validation of that. You can see all the huggies around. Sorry to go back. Like, all the huggies around here. What you don't see then is all the other uh, apelu and, and other baitfish, nehoo that were around. And then the tuna and the mahi-mahi and the wahoo and the marlin that were around this. Well, it's like an oasis in the middle of the desert. Now, thanks Logan. Uh, we've also then, uh, in 2017, went and set up an offshore fish farm down in Mexico in the Sea of Cortez. You can see this type, four miles offshore inside the Bay of La Paz. You can see a different type of net pen here. This is more like the traditional fish pen, but it's also submersible because you do get hurricanes rolling through there. Uh, we had six of these pens out here. We're really proud. The Aquaculture Stewardship Council, ASC, is the most rigorous uh, environmental and social measure of sustainability in aquaculture. And we were the first uh, ever farm to be certified for thi- this species, for the kampachi. So what are we proposing? What, why am I here on the agenda this, this evening? We're proposing to go a- and uh, put an offshore fish and limu operation out off Ever Beach, close to where the moi farm used to be, where we'd be growing uh, the Nanue. We've been able to produce these in the hatchery. They're relatively easy to grow in the hatchery. You've got to be careful when you say that in aquaculture. And it's also, we've already shown that there's really strong local demand, good growth rate, it thrives on a very sustainable diet. We think this fish has got a lot of potential globally to be able to, to move aquaculture to a more sustainable footing. Thanks, Logan. We also want to be growing moi because Randy Cates had been out there uh, for 15 years producing this fish. There's a really strong local demand uh, both in the restaurants and uh, in, in the retail. Randy had done a great job of just selling his fish locally. He didn't sell any fish of, of any of the moi onto the mainland. Uh, and so we recognize the potential for that. That is a, a, a great fish with a lot of potential. We'd also possibly be doing mahi-mahi, although mahi-mahi are really hard to do. There's some real challenges with that species. But we'd also like to be doing kampachi, perhaps in collaboration with the Kona operation now. There's a proven market for that. And there is some real opportunity there to get to scale of them not to be having to fly the kampachi over here. We'd be able to have local production. So the actual proposal then uh, is it would be oh, just a little bit deeper from where Randy had, Randy Cates had the Hooky Lau Farms operation that ran until 2013. Uh, you can see the, the grids there where formerly Randy had that, that permit there for uh, 10 net pens to be able to do 1,000 tons per year, just to the west of Pearl Harbor, essentially out of uh, on the Ula Beach there at Ever Beach. Thanks, Logan. Uh, this was shut down in 2013. There had been two EAs, environmental assessments that Randy had done. So there was extensive community consultation around this already. But since 2013, it has lain fellow when Randy ceased operations. We'd also like to be doing uh, limu out at that site. We don't yet know exactly which species are going to do well out there or what culture systems are going to work. This is a, a, a research project. But we know there's a lot of local demand for this. And the advantage of growing them in conjunction with the fish is that you can overcome this challenge of low nutrients. The beautiful blue water for Hawaii here because it's a desert out there in terms of nutrients. But if we can uh, have the, the, the limu down current of the fish pens, that then they'll thrive on the nitrogen that, that's in the shishi from the fish. Uh, that, that would, we've shown from some of the tank trials in Kona that it does very well. Thank you, Logan. Uh, so a, a little bit more, this is our proposal for where we would be. Uh, just a bit further to the Makai side from where the moi farm had been. Uh, thanks Logan. And if we can click through, we can get a zoom in, in on that. We'd be proposing to do 12 uh, net pens out there. These would be like the uh, pens that we use in Mexico. So they're, they come up to the surface and it's easy to get divers in or out or to get fish in, in or out of those pens, much more practical uh, and much less diving involved. Uh, and they would be tied into thi- this single grid here. Some of our earlier conversations, we've been talking with community members since about early 2020 about this project. And earlier on, we were talking about having pens that would swing with the current. Uh, we realized that, that was going to present some real engineering challenges. So we've come back to a more traditional uh, yeah, sorry, I can go through Logan there. This is like a more traditional net pen design. So some really robust engineering and we can submerge the, the pens down to where they're uh, about 30 to 40 feet below the surface. Uh, so we'd make sure that they stay there. If a hurricane came through, it'd be designed to be able to withstand hurricane forces. And it, it's out of the road, out of sight as well. Then we can raise them to the surface when we want to work on them. Thanks, Logan. So we have a, a, a couple of, of, we have our preferred site and there's a couple of alternative sites as well. I just wanted to quickly give a note, to be honest, the preferred site there uh, is Logan, if you can click there, it's about 230 feet deep. We like deep water because that means that you've got to disconnect between what's in the pen and then the substrate underneath. It's about 1.7 miles out offshore. The other alternative was we could move out deeper uh, after two miles offshore. We don't feel any need to do that for, in terms of the biosecurity or the health of, of the seabed underneath the pens. Uh, and actually, if you go out deeper, you, that's going to mean you've got to have your anchor spread further. So it'd need to be a, a, a larger area. Or we could go further to the west. There's a, a potential for a shallower site there, thanks Logan, alternative to um, about 125 feet. That, that's a little bit shallower than what we are normally comfortable with. It's closer to the, the, the um, tanker uh, buoys there. So our preference really would be to go into this, uh, the preferred alternative directly out of uh, on the Ula. Thanks, Logan. So you can click through this Logan to get to the bottom here. This was just recapping uh, the, 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 sorry, go, go back there. You know, we've done this before. This location has been proven to have low environmental impact. There was strong community support uh, from the, the last environmental assessment. And generally in our community outreach, we've been doing for the last four years or so, there's been a, a lot of support for this. The species that we'd be growing would be generally low trophy demands, strong local market demand. The idea of growing fish and limu together is something that we really feel uh, offers a lot of advantages. The deep water means there'd be very little impact on the seabed, broad uh, benefits in terms of local food production and economic diversification. We are pulling together a community advisory panel and we look forward to some suggestions perhaps from the neighborhood board for that. We are working to build relationship with the Limu Community College. They have an aquaculture program there. And that's, we want to be able to be hiring locally rather than having to bring folk in here uh, for this. If you can go through, this is sort of a summary of the community outreach efforts that we've had to date. Um, if there, and there are, sorry, there's some printouts there uh, of this presentation. So you can just have some more time to, to think through this. And there's also my business card there if you want to follow up by email and get a copy of this presentation. But if there are other people, anybody, i- either the board or the community, if there are other folk that you think we should be speaking to, please connect us with them. We want to be, when it comes around to the public hearing stage, we want people to say, oh yeah, we, we've heard all of this from Neil and the Ocean Era folk before. Uh, but so please do let us know if there are others you think we shouldn't speak to. Here's our contact information. Uh, well, that's cut out, uh, that's there. Or there's a business card over there. Happy to take questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Mahalo very much for your presentation and on the aquacultural project off of the Eva shores. Is there any questions or comments from the board members? Let's start with board member Mikiala and Stone, then going to Dr. Amy Bossler after.
Um, which Eva beach? Uh, whichever beach. There's several. There's One Ula, there's Pu'u Loa.
Yeah, it would, we had offshore of One Ula.
One, oh, good. Um, which cultural practitioners have you been in contact with for this project?
Uh, we reached out to Kalalaua Heritage Foundation, uh, to Ku'apu uh, and the, the limu and fish folk in Ku'apu. Uh, and we've reached out to Oha. Um, and then through uh, some of the folk at Ku'apu, we had some other introductions and then some of the other community consultations that we've had. If there are other cultural practitioners, we'd really welcome tho- those introductions.
Have you been in, have you, have you had any communication with them? Because especially at One Ula, there are um, there are families with genealogical connections to the limu at One Ula, especially the Eaton family and the Huakalee foundation. Limu is very much a part of their ohana and the and the, the, just the genealogical, it's a part of their ohana, their, their Eva residents. And limu is just their family heritage in Eva. Have, have you, have you been in contact with the Eaton ohana?
No, I'm not. That's a name that's new. We've only eaten uh, uh, ma- several times with Wally and Wally's sort of been the, the guru of limu there at Eva. And he hasn't mentioned those names. But if you could provide me with contacts for that, I'd be really grateful.
Yeah, well, Wally is great as well. But you've been in contact with Wally and he's a part of your?
Yeah, yeah, uh, sure, Wally did that.
Okay, that's great. And Wally, Wally supports this, this um, project?
Uh, I, I think what Wally understands and need to be growing more limu uh, a- and the uh, I think generally Ku'apu, the, the, the limu folk uh, limu folk from Ku'apu have expressed support for this effort. I haven't actually asked Wally, are you going to support this? Uh, but I think generally he, he, he's been very positive. We've got a close working relationship with him. We really appreciate all of the guidance.
That's great. That's, um, that's great. I just, um, commercialize, what does that mean? Your, your, your project is about commercializing. What does that mean?
Uh, I think our thinking about the, the R and D work that we do, I mean, there's a reason why we're at, at a uh, a for-profit company rather than being academic researchers. Very early on in my career, the idea of publishing a paper and waiting for somebody to go and do something useful with that felt a little bit uh, ineffectual. And what I, I, I saw, I worked early on in my career in pearl farm development and the way to be able to re-establish pearl oyster stocks, we felt was to set up pearl farms because then you've got a natural breeding center. I think that carries over for um, a- aquaculture generally for fish and for limu. That for all of those global challenges that you've seen, uh, we, we very much are, are part of the mindset of thinking globally but acting locally. You can't really rely on foundations or academics to solve those problems. We have to find the solutions a- and then build them out to scale. And we think the way to do that is to have people build businesses because then your challenge, then i- i- is managing it. You know, that, that they will grow of their own volition is, is the aspiration.
Um, thank you. Um, limu is a huge part of the identity of Eva. Um, there are dozens and dozens of varieties of limu just thrive in Eva. And the fragrance of the limu was very, very much a part of just the essence of, of this community. So any project that is to support limu is really exciting for me, as long as it aligns with the cultural practices and is supported by the cultural practitioners and those of the genealogical um, background and heritage of, of Eva. Um, and I would love to um, put you in contact with who Vaynani Eaton, whose grandmother was a limu practitioner at One Ula, um, which your project i- is, is a part of. I, I would love to, to give you her information. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Be very grateful.
Dr. Amy Bossler?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, thank you, Allah. You, you asked some of the questions I was planning as well. Um, my other concern, um, I'm, I am not familiar with deep water limu farming. So this is new to me, deeper water. Um, but my concern is always for our fish, fishermen, women, our divers, our spruce fishing communities um, are alive and well in this area. And this is also some of our shark breeding grounds. I'm wondering if any studies have been done on how these are going to impact our sharks. I remember those old my cages. I think it's long enough that I can admit that I dope those old cages. And I know it, they were attracting some very big, big uh, mono that we need. But um, made them a little bit more feisty, a little bit more aggressive. So if you're talking about like people using the cages in Kona to go fish off of, ooh, that's concerning with some of the bigger species coming. Just wondering about impact studies for the, the sharks and then also our migratory whales that are out in the area as well. Um, just wondering if you could speak a little bit more about this?
Sure. That, that's uh, some of you that were marine biologists. So we, we, we spent a lot of time thinking about this. And, and you know, we've been drafting up uh, our biomammal assessment and we've been able to work through that, those sorts of questions. Um, it generally, any structure that you put out in the ocean, it becomes an oasis. And so it will attract species. And, and so um, yes, you will have, have sharks around there and ulua that there were. I don't know what Randy, I dived on Randy's cages a couple of times. Didn't see the ulua, but in Kona, they're there. Um, generally in Kona, the, the sharks are down deep. They'll rarely come up. Part of the reason why we want to go to this kind of a cage, it will have sort of the float ring at the surface is then that you don't have to have divers going in and out through zippers, going in and out through zippers. Sometimes you'll have some fish that will leak out. The kampachi are really friendly and they stay close to the diver. And as the diver comes out to zipper. So by having a surface uh, entry and exit for the divers, you don't have that potential for leakage. And you also don't have the, you know, the divers are unexposed to that. Uh, the area judging from, from Randy's prior EAs and from all of the consultation that I've had with folk the day out in that was 230 feet deep. There's not a lot of free diving going on out there. It's bare sands bottom. Actually, the Haseco biologist has said there's a lot of a invasive limu that start to become established at that depth uh, out there. Uh, and so um, I don't think there's going to be much conflict wi- with divers or, or swimmers out there. In the past, Randy had reported that folk were, that the local fishing community, uh, the apelu fishermen would come in and fish close to the pens because the apelu were attracted there. And in Kona, we had the same thing there. The, the, the apelu were around there. Every morning there'd be uh, the fellow fishermen out there cleaning up. So that, that's again, one of these back scratch benefits of, of, of fishing and aquaculture. In terms of marine mammals, uh, the operation in Kona is located within the Humpback Whale Sanctuary. And the Humpback whales don't seem to give a rip. Uh, that they will just i- ignore it as they go back and forth. There has been uh, there was one instance previously where with the submerged cage, they had taken out a panel and left it submerged. And there was a monk seal that swam into the cage and drowned. Uh, and because of that, now in Kona, they never leave any of the panels open or any of the zippers open whenever an empty, this was an empty cage. So they figured what's, what's worth, I think. There was a random unpredictable accident. Uh, but because we, we would not have uh, zippers or any entry and exits of the cage below the waterline, we'd close it all up before we submerged it. So just in Kona, they'd eliminated that risk and we would eliminate that risk here as well. There is some potential for, if we have the limu lines unprotected, that some bonu are going to come and think of it as a salad bar. The limu, the after all limu culture, we, we've got to figure that out. If you don't have a, a clear plan for that, we're doing research in Kona. We've got permits to go and do an offshore array out of Kona to go and, and test some of this. But we're going to figure that out. That's part of what we'd like to have the community advisory panel help us think through. And also in terms of uh, Mikaala, to, to your question about just the, the Eva community and their connection with limu. What Wally has talked about is he'd like to see some more limu restocking efforts uh, on the reef there. And that's something which we'd like the community advisory panel to help us think through as well. Where and how should we do that and what's the plans? We'd like to be able to help that sort of reef restoration happen.
Any other questions from fellow board members?
Just a comment. I think your advisory panel is a great idea and I'm glad that you have that on your.
Thank you. We, we're looking forward to some suggestions from the board, please.
Now let's open it up for any questions from the community at large. Anyone in person or online? Um, community member Patrick Watson.
Aloha Chair, and thank you, Mr. Sims, for your presentation. Uh, I found it pretty exciting and attractive as a community member. And as a board member, Lidstone pointed out, you know, You know, growing up here as a kid, I grew up in Kaimaki and I equate Eva Beach with Limu. My mom used to take me there and we used to pick Limu, you know, growing up. And I slowly watched the amount of Limu get diminished to the point where like before you used to have to like pull it apart to go swimming kind like it was very thick on the shore and now it's gotten to a point where it's like gone, you know, and so that's shocking for me, but the fact that the effort you're trying to do sounds really encouraging. But I do have a question. You mentioned synergies and collaboration with others. And one of the things that occurred during the Red Hill fuel spills, something that was revealed was that our local border water supply and DOH didn't have the local resources to check for contaminants at the levels that we were sort of looking for as a community. They have to send the press samples away, wait a week, come back. Do you have any practices with this proposed project that monitors the water quality? Water quality? Because we're talking about stuff coming from like Westlock from Pearl Harbor, which as we all kind of know is highly contaminated and then stuff coming from the other side from Barbara's Point. So I was thinking that might be an opportunity to collaborate with community members that are testing the waters in the local area. I know there's an organization Kingdom Pathway that routinely tests the water coming out of the canals into the ocean and I just wanted to get your feedback regarding that.
Thank you very much, Patrick. We will, as part of the permitting process here, we have to get a NPDES, a National Gluten Discharge Elimination System permit from the Department of Health. It's an EPA permit that the local Department of Health Clean Water Branch issues that, as well as also we've got to get permits from the Army Corps of Engineers, we'll have instructor in the water and from Coastal Zone Management Compliance Permit. Sorry, I'm getting tangled up in the permits. But the NPDES permit is specifically to look at at water quality and at impacts and impacts on the seabed around the operation. And this is something that is mandated, something that we embrace because we want to be able to share with the community that data and allow folk to be able to have it. I think sometimes when people hear the term, you know, fish farm, they have this negative associations. But what we were able to do in Kona and what continues in Kona to this day is producing a really high quality fish with no measurable impact, no significant impact and often you can't even measure the impact from the fish pens on the coral reef directly in shore on the water quality. We will be under the Clean Water Branch guidelines will be instituted, probably it'll start out at a monthly water quality monitoring program around the farm and the substrate, the seabed underneath the farm as well, monitoring the health of that or any impacts. Over time, if we're able to prove that there is no impact, that that might reduce in frequency. In terms of the potential for contaminants, this is part of why we like deep water rather than actually growing Limu in Pearl Harbor where there's some real potential for contaminants. Out in the deeper water, there's more ocean water mixing. We would still be testing that Limu to make sure there's no potential for bioaccumulation. And if we were feeding that Limu to the Nenuai, we'd also be testing them as well for any of the potential contaminants. I think primarily heavy metals is what we'd be looking at, but we looked at Clean Water Branch and the Food Safety Department of Health to guide us on that. We very much welcome the potential to collaborate with if there are other community groups that are doing environmental monitoring, water quality or seabed monitoring in the area. That's something that we would really welcome. If you know those folk, please, Mr. Watson, if you can get my contact information and please connect me with them, that would be appreciated.
We'll do that. Mahalo very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other community questions or concerns at this time? Chair recognizes Vice Chair Dr. Kyony Dudley.
I just want to say it's really great to have you doing this. You know, very much appreciated. We we expect that by 2050 Hawaii, by 2050, there's not going to be any food to import to Hawaii. And you know, the UN says that by 2050, there will be 387 million people starving in the world. You know, so to be getting ahead of the whole thing by starting something like this is just really wonderful and it's great to have you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated.
Any other questions or concerns from the community at large? Okay, thank you so much for the presentation and as you continue to progress, we'd love to have you back periodically in order to hear the progress and see what we can do in order to make sure that your project is successful.
Mahalo. Thank you very much, Chair. We look forward to being part of this community.
Okay, now we go on to state monthly reports, going first to Congressman Ed Case. His uncle Nestor with us this evening by chance.
I could see him online earlier, but.
Okay, no problem. How about Congresswoman Jill Tukuda?
First one with the ticket that submitted a report that's in the draft, but I don't see it right online.
Okay, written report has been submitted. Now let's go to Governor Josh Green. Is Uncle Gordon Pang online with us? Still working late at the office? Probably is. We'll give him a few seconds. If not, we'll come back to him.
Hey Gordon, if you're there, you're on mute.
Hear me?
Yep, we hear you now. Yep.
Okay, but you can't see me.
Well, we can't see you. It's okay.
Will you match your smile?
Sorry, you guys crept up on me. I didn't realize I was gonna up and so quickly.
No problem. Take a breath. Do we need to come back to you, Uncle Gordon?
Yeah, why don't you guys come back to me in a little bit?
No worry. Let's see if we can sneak up on some other people here. How about Highways Division? Awesome. Did I not see Highways Division come on?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, brief update from Highways Division is that they are working with the city Department of Transportation in order to put up the speed hump in front of our school up on what is the name I'm blanking? Where we were just talking about?
Kapolei High School, Kapolei Middle School?
No, Makakilo Elementary.
Kapolei Elementary, Makalani.
On Palila. So they started their active engagement and they apologized for not putting the notice out earlier. And I told them not a problem. I'm glad you guys are moving forward with getting the work done. Hey, let's go now to Senator Gabbard's office. Are you hearing none?
Hi everyone, yes, I'm here.
Okay, hey, aloha Meg, long time no see.
Yes, I know. Aloha. Hold on one second. Oh my goodness. I just wanted to say I'm really happy to be here and Nino couldn't make it tonight, so I am here and I don't know why my oh my video was messing up. Let me just see something. See if this. Oh, here we go. Ah, sorry about that. Okay, so Senator Gabbard is wishes everyone aloha and I also want to send my aloha to Chair Harris, Vice Chair Dudley and Honorable Board Member and community members. He invites Senator invites you all to his Listen Story Community Meeting this Saturday, March 30th from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Kapolei High School Teachers Lounge. You can also join via Zoom. So you can email sen gabbard at capital.hawaii.gov or for a link to the meeting. And I'll also put that in the chat. Our special guest speaker will be Ernie Lau, Manager and Chief Engineer of the Border Water Supply. And last month, we welcomed Chelsea Arnott, Coordinator for the Hawaii Invasive Species Council and who gave us some tips and things that we could do to help with the serious infestation of invasive species such as the little fire ant, cookie frogs and coconut arnosaurus beetle beetles on the west side and statewide. You can view her presentation, which is chock full of information on the Senator's YouTube channel. I'll also put that link in the chat. And for some of you who don't know, we just got word, Senator just got word that the Daniel Akaka VA Clinic is having its grand opening on April 5th. So that's been a long time coming. The specialty aloha vets clinic is located a few hundred yards Makka of Costco Makai of Costco on Roosevelt Boulevard and Senator will be going to the the grand opening. He also attended the groundbreaking in 2021. So we do have a March newsletter for you, so I will put that, I think, yes, I already put that link in the chat. So please feel free to reach out to our office and to Senator Gabbard if he can help you in any way. Thank you very much. That's my report for this evening.
Mahalo and to Meg, good to have you here with us again.
Yes.
But it's good to see you. Any questions or concerns from Senator Gabbard's office?
What time is that open, is the grand opening? What time?
Oh, good. I don't know, but I'll get back to you all on that. Let me see if I can. Yeah, it's not in my notes, but I will look on.
10 o'clock. We got it from here. 10 o'clock.
Oh, good.
No need homework.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have enough of that already. But nice to see you all. Thanks very much.
Okay, aloha. Let's go now to State Senator Miles Shimobukuro. Is Patrice or someone else online?
She was on earlier. She dropped Senator's newsletter in chat.
Okay, so the report is available in chat and online in our cloud drive. And now for Representative Diamond Garcia. Is he online or? Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Chair, mahalo.
You all have a great afternoon. Mahalo.
Thank you. Hello, Chair Harris, Vice Chair Dudley and members of the board and the community. My name is Hunter Harris. I'll be sitting in for Representative Garcia today. He's so sorry he didn't make it today. He has parental engagement in town, so he sent me to get the next best thing. All right, just to go through this newsletter really fast with the folks. Representative Garcia wanted to give a much needed and warm mahalo to everybody who attended our town hall that we had a couple of weeks ago. We wanted to also mahalo board member, Mahalo for attending. Thank you very much. It was a blessing to have you there and to see you there in the community as well as all the people that came. It was a great experience. Also, Villages of Kapolei sign updates, so we do have about 10 scheduled for April. I believe we passed that out last Thursday, but we do have more just in case you have 10 more that we brought, just in case anyone else in the community wants to grab some. So you'll see all of those again happening in April, about 10 signs over there. For different reasons, some are just faded, you can't read them at all. These are pictures that my counterpart just took the other day in Kapolei. So these are signs that definitely need to be replaced, whether they're leaning or the posts aren't even there. There were some signs that were completely missing, so we were able to again put the HFC after Rep went to a vocal meeting group and kind of expressed the concerns of the community. Moving on, we also have his resolutions, his resolution season now in the House side as the Senate bills are coming over. Over there, the main one that he wanted to highlight for you, book is HR 45. That one is pertaining to Kapolei Parkway and since speeding mitigation, so that's going to do speed bumps, hopefully add on some additional street signs, whether that's going to be for crossings or speed limits. That was the main one. And that did pass the Transportation Committee with amendments, but those amendments just kind of broadened it a little bit. It was more of a language tweak to the original resolution. So super easy there. We also had a civil cafe, so civil bee came over to the state Capitol. There is a panel full of various reps and senators that came, sat down, top story. It was a great session over there as well. And then we also have Kapolei Campbell Awardees. So we did have our Kapolei Campbell Complex get awarded for the 2022 Team of the Year. That was for our Kapolei Complex, a Kapolei Campbell Complex Support Staff for our schools. So Rep was very proud of that. We were having some certificates that are passing out to those staffers. And then at the very bottom, we have just a little tidbit, how to testify and track bills and how to register the things. So you can scan that QR code. Yep, watch those videos. We all thank you guys for adding me.
Hey, mahalo for being here with us. Any questions from the board? Chair recognizes Dr. Amy Bossler first and then McFerrar after.
Thank you. This is coming, very likely coming to the representative, so just wondering, wanting to make sure he's aware of SR 74 and SJR 88. Both are in the Senate right now and under, they would be asking the Department of Education to conduct wellness visits for any child who's been removed from the Department of Education for homeschooling. We have many on the Leeward Coast who are homeschoolers and this is very concerning for our citizens. These wellness checks are not just like you go to the hospital once a year to have your well baby visit. These would be police officers coming to the house or houses just purely because we have homeschoolers. So this is concerning our ability to choose what quality of education we want for our kids.
Gotcha. I mean, that's SR 74.
SR 74 and SJR 88.
XJR.
They are ever Senate currently.
I will definitely bring that to Rep's attention and then we'll do some.
Thank you.
Okay, any other after Uncle Mitch?
Hi there. This is a breath of fresh air to me. Being the transportation chair for this board, the one thing that I would like to have possibly changed on this, it's just, it's semantics, but speed bumps normally are found in like a parking lot, like you're going to go through, you know, Kapolei crossroads and you know, very slow speeds where if speed tables, like you would find going out onto the west side or speed humps, those are ones that require you either cross them at a 30 mile per hour speed or in the case of possibly humps, that they're crossed at 25 miles per hour. So for that to be successful on a four lane street like Kapolei Parkway, I would suggest possibly install speed tables slash humps, whatever is appropriate. And in three different parts of this being the the first paragraph, sixth and seventh paragraph, they have bumps in there. So I think that's something that's going to be a lot more passable, but I can understand the the spirit of how it was written rather than as exact as it is. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I'll definitely bring you back to Rep.
Okay, great. I marked up a copy if you'd like. It's I'll just leave it up here.
I was gonna say the same thing. I think bumps is a real problem and I don't want to see bumps anywhere. Humps, okay. So, thank you.
Gotcha. Perfect. Gotcha. Perfect.
Any other questions or comments for Representative Diamond Garcia's office? Here in, thank you for being here with us this evening. We appreciate you being here with us Hunter. Even though rep wasn't here, we are glad to see your smiling face.
Thank you both.
Okay, now let's go to Representative Kila's office if they have a representative here this evening. Hearing none. Rep Souza. Hearing none from Rep Souza. ACDA already told me they've submitted their written report and will unfortunately not be here with us this evening. So we'll circle back from the top going to see if anyone else is ready to go. Last call for congressmen or Congresswoman. Hearing none. Uncle Gordon, have you resolved your technical difficulties?
Hey Gordon, if you're there, you're on you're on mute still.
Not hearing from him. Just reach out to him and let him know. We'll come back to his report later on if he does get connectivity again. So now let's go to community and board concerns and announcements. Announcements, concerns from fellow board members. Chair already notes the resolutions of concern from member Dr. Amy Bossler. Any other announcements? Good, great.
Please just add if this is the the resolutions that I did bring up are concerning not just because of the for the homeschooling community, but it's also concerning for me for the resources these visits could take away from our police department. And also most importantly, the resources that it would be taking away from our current DOE schools. I'm very concerned about losing any more funding. Our schools need every dime. Thank you.
Thank you. Depending on timeframe, does the honorable member wish to agenda this at the next meeting for us to take a position on?
I think that would be wonderful.
Okay, great. Chair recognizes Doctor Tommy Dudley, Vice Chair.
I just want to say the pig is not on the agenda at all. So I'd like to take this time to just give a really brief report. We did have the Planning Commission meeting and we had our resolution presented there. They kind of ignored it. I found out since that the next step is it goes to the Land Use Commission. The Land Use Commission has an awful lot of people on the board now that are really concerned and and good people who belong on the Land Use Commission as opposed to back in the days when POC was approved. The I have talked with people at the Land Use Commission Office and asked them to when it finally comes and it has not been sent to them yet at all. When it finally comes, I've asked if they would put us on the agenda that days to speak about the resolution and really give it a lot more emphasis that way. So we'll see what happens here. I think people are happy with what we're doing and want to support us.
Thank you, Vice Chair, for the report from the permitted interaction group regarding the beautification of Makakilo Quarry and end of life planning or what it looks like in 2042 or thereafter.
Forty seven.
Forty seven. Oh, 15 years. That's right. 2047 or thereafter. Thank you. Okay, going to remember McFerrer and then back to Dr. Amy Bossler after.
Yeah, I didn't know whether we needed to agenda this or not, but I wanted to either write a request letter or if we have to go so far as a resolution to get somebody from DTS as one of our our city monthly reports, possibly bimonthly like every other month or even quarter. That's what I thought we might discuss because I want to be able to get some sort of an update on things like what I heard at the town hall meeting that had to do with traffic improvements, traffic mitigation, the Makakilo extension. I got up in front of the entire, they had everybody who was somebody at the mayor's town hall and told them that if we don't have a project manager for the Makakilo extension, then we don't have a project. And it was met with some furrowed eyebrows and things like that, but it's true. I work on projects for the state and if we don't have somebody who's actually managing that project because it has to take the cooperation of both the city and the state to be able to secure the funding and also to deal with roadblocks such as the cultural artifact issue they have going out there. I deal with a number of those with SHPD all over the island. And this why holy ditch is nothing different than seven other projects that we've got. And if we had a project manager, then they would be the ones who could drive going to SHPD and, you know, appealing to them. I'm already working on getting a meeting on the inside where I work because they are part of the DLNR framework that I work within and trying to find out who it was that had dealt with that particular request and how it was packaged. So I want to be able to get somebody who you know, with with that department to come out and give us updates or for us to be able to ask them questions, take them back and get us answers.
Okay. The chair's inclination at this time is I'll follow up with the mayor's office with Director Suzuka and ask for guidance on how to do that. And we can absolutely formalize on the agenda our requests. Well, I'll seek the guidance of the deputy director. Yeah.
Yeah. So the same way that Chair that you raised the concern about the the ash to construction materials like that'll go to the Department of Environmental Services. And so something in the merit report for next month is going to be requesting info from them. What I can do is the same thing for DTS, those things that you just outlined, I can put that in the marriage report that Deputy Suzuka always reports on. If you have a certain date, whether it's the April meeting or the May meeting, I can put in a request for a DTS representative to present here at the meeting to provide an update. And then at that time, I would recommend requesting a quarterly update, just requesting, you know, they can say, oh, you know, not able to do it at this time. And that's the end of it. But if you guys request a certain date, then at least you get something in writing.
Well, yeah, yeah. And I think it's it's appropriate that, you know, we don't need it every month because things don't move that quickly. And starting off possibly in April and being able to have somebody that we can talk to and ask questions that they can take back and get us answers for. It's not just going to be somebody that we need to beat up on over the Makakilo extension. I wouldn't, I need to find out. We have concerns about Makakilo Drive and traffic mitigation and things like that. And we just need somebody. This is still a a community that's developing. We're still building here. We're still paving here. We're still, this is a growing community. And we need to be able to have the people who are putting in our infrastructure to be able to tell us what's going in or for us to ask them, hey, this is a kind of nice thing to have. This is a must have, that type of thing. And we need to be able to hold someone accountable at DTS. Because I talked to Roger Moore when we were at the town hall meeting and you know, he kind of knows my position and they really tried to get right in there on me and kind of slow my roll. But I did have some valid points and I think we can make some progress. There's a couple of roadblocks like I had mentioned that I'm going to work on on the inside and be able to get us past that so that they can't use that as the excuse of the why they can't come up as an alternative to the Makakilo Drive extension. So there's a couple of alternatives that Representative Fola came up with or Councilmember Tapola came up with, which would work in the short term, but in the long term, there may be a realignment of sorts that we'll be considering. So I'm going to kind of make that my transportation report, which I normally get cut off because we run out of time. So that's that's kind of where where we're at with the Transportation Committee.
I can definitely put in that request for you for the April meeting. That's.
Yep, I think it'll be fair to with the itemized list of concerns to report from DTS for their representative for the April or May meeting would be greatly appreciated.
Sure, I'll put in May as an alternate. And then, you know, mind me asking. Yeah, sorry, I wasn't at last last week's town hall meeting. I had another board meeting, but request at the town hall meeting for them to do updates of a sort.
I told them that it was going to be something that I would bring up at my neighborhood board of meeting. Because, you know, of our forum here rather than in a general forum that meets sporadically. So that's what I'm doing. So they're they're expecting it.
Great, thanks.
Good. Excellent. So hopefully we will have that itemized list that I can go to DTS and request their report in April or May. Any others after you? Okay, go right ahead.
Last one. I wanted to thank Congressman, Congresswoman Fola for getting our park, our Kapole Playground fixed that she had last autumn put together a I think a pig to have have investigated and that park has been fixed. So that's wonderful. And I would be interested in an update on, I haven't heard in any of her newsletters about the director of our regional park if that position has been filled. But definitely thank her for all the work she's been doing for us. Definitely reflected in the park.
Now let's go to any announcements or concerns from the community at large. Uncle, come.
What Chair, what other members?
My name is John Yoshimura. I am an employee with a company called Plus Power. And we recently blessed and dedicated our 185 megawatt battery in Kapole Harbor side. It is an essential part of Hawaiian Electric's plans to take us to 100% renewable energy by the year 2045. It's not going to bore you with the specifics, but it's a very, very advanced interesting, interesting project. It's already garnered a lot of local, national and international press. In a nutshell, it's basically a pacemaker for the grid. It has a lot of storage, so it can store a lot of the renewable energy that's produced during the day. But it also works during the day by discharging power to keep the grid frequency stable, which is what utilities need to do. So it's a it's a great project. We're very happy that it's done. And I wanted to come here to thank you because the Makakilo Kapole Neighborhood Board really was the first major organization that supported our project. And I want to thank the Chair for shepherding us to several meetings before we asked for formal support. And I also want to thank the Vice Chair, Mr. Dudley, who had some legitimate concerns, but took the time to come out to the project site to look at it. I think after he did, he was very pleased with the location and actually made a motion for board to support our project. This was way back in 2019. We had hoped to have this done a lot sooner, but as we all know, you know, we had to hunker down in 2020, 2021 and part of 2022. So we're very happy that this is finally done and it kind of takes the place of the coal plant. So no longer are we burning coal. But we have replaced the capacity with a state of the art battery system. And if you have any interest, there's some very interesting short articles that you can Google. It's called Kapole Energy Storage. And you know, we had a blessing. And had basically some nice little giveaways. And I brought these plus powered puzzles. They are valued at about 75 cents a piece. You know, as a former public official, I'm very concerned about our ethics laws. If you bring enough for everybody in the room, it's not considered a gift to you. It's considered, you know, something that's available to the general public. So I have 15 of them. I think I counted and I think we have.
Everybody can get.
One, you know, these are, it's actually a puzzle of the project and it's a nice little commemorative thing. And if you don't want it, maybe you can take it and give it to your grandkid or your or your nephew or whatever. It's kind of a puzzle, but it's also, you know, something that I think is really groundbreaking project. And thank you for your help and your role in making this happen.
Mahalo. Thank you for coming back. Well, wishes on Kapole Energy Storage. Helping to be the pacemaker for Oahu. Here we have a few more announcements before I do know we have reports from state officials that have joined us. So let's get through our last round of announcements.
Evening, everybody. Members of the board, members of the community. I'm Tom Gaston and I wanted to share a little bit about the VA clinic because you heard how it is going to be opening soon next Friday. And in order to open next Friday, though, there's something that needs to happen. Remember those robes, that new building thing? Some of that, it's got to open up a little bit. So that's exactly what we're doing. We came up with a way of doing that. So if you look at this image here, you see those two big red marks? That portion of the road can't open just yet because we're still going to finish up some mitigation. But what we are going to do is open up this first part. So you see the green arrows? That's going to be the ingress going into the clinic. So you're going to be able to drive down this new portion of Kamakilo Boulevard. And if you want to exit the clinic, then you'll just be able to come out that way. So you're going to have full ingress egress, no matter what. We did what we needed to do to open up this portion. And so they're going to be doing that sometime next week, but by the time the grand opening occurs, it'll be opened up public. Drive, okay. Now, the other thing, I have some good news about this. Do you remember that? I have some friends now at DOE from a long time ago and they are so helpful that we actually already got the MOU at their Deputy Attorney General's office for review. They already reviewed it one week. We hope to get it reviewed by the end of this week. After that gets approved, I saw the superintendent today at this other function and he said he'd sign off on it. Yay. And then we go get the city and county to approve the plans and we can finish up this road.
Nice.
We're almost there. I have one request. Next month, if we can be on the agenda and do a presentation because one of the asset management team wants to come by and give you guys an update about what's happening at parcel 10, where it's a marism to be.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So next month, we will, we would like to do a little presentation on that.
Okay, awesome.
That's my quick update. Any questions?
Go ahead.
The Roosevelt with the median, will both sides be open? Not yet.
Still finishing up some mitigation work over there. But what you will see though periodically is that, you know, sometimes a portion is open because all the remedial work.
I saw that today. It happened today or yesterday.
Hawaiian Tel was out there trying to take one of the holes. And so they closed off a portion of it. So they can work that. That's why it's not 100% open just yet. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
With parking for the Friday, so I mean.
So that parking lot will be open. It will be, it's got 500 stalls. So it should be.
I think it'll be at once.
Okay.
So once this project is done, are you? So once this project is done, are you available to work at DTS?
I can't leave my company, there's so much more to do.
You know, it's been so refreshing just to have you come in and keep us abreast of the progress of this. Project which, you know, seems like when the feds are running at it. Gets built and it's done and we move on.
Honestly, it was me personally who wanted to do that. I wanted to come just so you guys were in the loop. And understand what's happening, so there's no surprises. And if you've got anything for me, please let me know too and we can always take it back down.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Now we go online for. Community member Patrick Watson. Announcements.
Aloha, Chair. Um, I just actually had a um. Uh, concern about the um upcoming. Uh, game room package you folks are going to be addressing. Is this the right proper time to talk about that?
No, it's not. We will take it up in new business, but thank you for letting us know. So we'll we'll take it up later.
Okay, then the only other thing I wanted to say is to say uh my appreciation for board member Ferrera and uh Mr. Gennario about uh. Actively pursuing that Makakilo extension drive the way they do. Um, I really appreciate that and uh just wanted to offer my thanks. Thank you.
Any other community members online having? Announcements or concerns to be raised? Meeting member Mara Hansen.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I um, so I don't really have um an announcement or anything. I just um in regards to the request for. Uh, I think he said it was TPS. To make periodic reports. Um, I fully support that because. That they really need to hear back from the community members who actually live in the community. Um, and then I would like to know how. We community members could share our concerns with. The board, what's the most appropriate way to do that so that um? Makakilo extension is an important thing. I definitely think we need to keep hammering away at that. Um, but there are other issues too. So if there's a a way that we can get you feedback, how would we do that?
So the ways to provide feedback to our board is. Now, during meetings like you're doing now. Um, also. The board members have their contact information on the city's website um that you can actually reach out to them. And you can come in person or. Or even chat on top of the webex to raise any concerns for our neighbor board assistant to fly for us. Or you can talk directly to. The mayor's representative. But those are the ways that you can provide feedback in this forum.
Okay, I I appreciate it because um, well, I'll 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 look up because um it's Mr. Ferreria that's the uh kind of the transportation.
Yes.
Representative, right? I'll look up your um email address and get you some specifics on. On some other things that I think are concerning. Here in in the area. Thanks.
I can give you my email address. You got something to write with?
Yeah, I absolutely do.
Okay, it's Mick, M I C K. Ferrera, F E R R E I R A. I S is in Sam at gmail dot com. So when you read it, it says Mick Ferrer is at gmail dot com.
Cute. Um, and easy to remember. Thank you for that.
All right.
Yeah, awesome. Hearing no other concerns or announcements from the border community, we go back to state reports and I believe we have. Mr. Uncle Gordon Pang and then Representative Souza potentially. So let's start with Uncle Gordon.
Every time's a charm.
Yeah, we can hear you and see you right on.
Hear and see me now. Okay, right on. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and um. Members and fellow West Oahu residents. Gordon Pang. Boy Housing Finance and Development Corporation. And uh sometimes. Your representative to the office of the governor. Um. I have. The governor's uh. March um newsletter, which speaks about the West Oahu. Film studio. Um, also some new Kahale, Kahale that are opening up. And also a housing project. Uh, that's going to go up on the site of the old Mayor Wright's housing. Um. But I think more importantly for all of us in West Oahu. Um, I wanted to give you folks a quick update on. The uh awarding of the master plan for what we all know is the Northwest uh. Um, the Northwest property. Which of course is. The property across from uh Walmart. As for Barrett and Kamakila. Uh, we selected a master planner for that and I have a. A link to the uh press release there. Um, if you want more information. Um, let me know and I can find you a little bit more information. But basically, um, we awarded this uh to a partnership. Consisting of uh two. Relatively known quantities. You can Akia Development. And the Michaels Organization. Um, so nineteen and a half acre site. Um, and uh. The new community is going to be called Haku Kapolee. Um, of course. Some of you folks may know Haku. Is a uh style of uh lay that's very intricate. Um, and a weaving, right? And uh that's what we have here is a a mixed use community that's um going to be interwoven. Except for two managers units, all of the units um are going to be. For households earning thirty to sixty percent. All the rental units. Are going to be for households earning thirty to sixty percent of Oahu AMI. And uh the sales units are going to be. Um, accessible to those making between eighty percent and a hundred forty percent AMI. Um. This is essentially the last um. Major chunk of property on. What we know formerly as the villages of Kapolee. Um, you know, which was started, of course, by Governor Waheh and. Uh, Joe Conan and those folks some thirty years ago. Um. To date, approximately four thousand units have been built in the villages of Kapolee proper. And two thirds of that are uh for considered affordable housing. Um, so we received three proposals that met the minimum uh requirements and these guys uh were selected. Phase one will consist of three hundred forty-four units spread across two multifamily buildings. Units will be priced for those households earning thirty percent, fifty percent and sixty percent AMI or less. A two will have three hundred seventy-six units and two multifamily. Housing buildings as well as ninety-five thousand square feet of commercial space. And um they're telling us there's going to be a grocery store there as well. Twenty units there will be again priced for households earning thirty, fifty. And sixty percent or below AMI. Um, the developers also have an option to add a hundred thirty more units in this phase two. Very higher density alternative, two hundred seventy foot mid-rise towers. Um, but they're going to need more entitlements. And financing in order to to go that route. Um. Phase three calls for fifty for sale units, so that's the extent of the for sale units. They will be placed in nine three level. Fee simple townhouse buildings. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, those will be for. Folks making eighty to a hundred forty percent AMI. Um. We expect to. Receive in the sales of the fee simple units as well as the lease. Uh, what amounts to about twenty-one point seven million dollars in today's dollars and um. We just want to stress that the awarding of the master plan is just that, is the awarding of the master plan. Um, to this partnership. These folks are still going to have to go in and and um. And do a lot more things, including meeting with you folks at some point. Um, the developers have also indicated they want to come back to us. Supply for low income housing tax credits, life tech credits. And uh possibly uh low interest loans as well. Through our agency. Um. Phase one is expected to be ready to. Uh. See its first occupants in April twenty twenty-nine and full build out in April twenty thirty-three. And that's about it. I'll take any questions if you have about this project or anything else.
Thank you for the report. Chair recognizes board member Michaela Lindstrom.
Mahalo, Gordon, for that report. Um, the Campbell Kapolee complex is the largest. Boy E DOE complex in the entire state. It would be nice to have some teacher housing in there. That's. That's all. Mahalo.
I would agree.
Chair recognizes board member Tia Lita Allah.
Hello, okay, so that's a lot of houses. And. I'm interested to see is where, how's the traffic going to work out because Kapolee is already pretty snug as it is, I think. Um, and then, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mikyala, but Haku. I know colloquially it's, we think of it as like a lepo, all right, yeah, but. Actually, it's it's not that. Haku means to create. It also means like an overseer or a lord. So maybe your um developers need to check.
I'm sorry, I meant Hoku.
Hoku. Hoku means star, so even that is definitely not a. Type of.
I don't know, Haku, Haku.
Yeah.
You talked to the people actually naming them, Gordon.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Gordon, I know it's not you, um, but maybe your people need to check there a little.
Um, well, I I looked it up myself in Pukui before I came to you with that, so. We'll take a look and come back and huddle on that.
Oh, well, we got Mikyala right here, so. She's a modern Pukuis, yes.
Yeah, but yeah, the the name is a little strange, but the name is.
Strange. Um, but yeah, I'm definitely interested to see these developers come back and try to um. See how they're gonna um pretend like this is actually going to work out for traffic in law. Thank you.
From a tracked traffic perspective?
Yeah, just like overpopulation perspective, like how many houses is going to be across Walmart with a mid-rise like so straight when you come into Makak. To Kapolee, you're going to see mid-rises like.
Right, well, the mid-rise. The mid-rise um. Portion is going to be discussed separately. Um, it's an option for which they're going to have to come in and do. You know, uh, separate approvals. Um, so far as the the traffic, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna have to deal with that. Um. And uh. You know, it's 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 part of the master plan. I mean, again, a master plan is a master plan. Kapolee was a master plan, right? Every little segment needs to come in and. And be hashed out, so you guys will have your chance to. Have your say.
After the fact, maybe.
I got, I got a, I got a twelve thousand home. In front of my, in front of my freeway entrance, so.
I know, and tell me how, and tell me if that's the life, tell me if that's the way you like your life.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, board member Tia Lita Allah. Chair recognizes board member Dr. Amy Bosler.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate, uh, board member Mikyala with the teacher housing. Comment that's critical, I think, especially getting talent on the west side and the rural coast communities. Um, and then also to kind of mimic um. Our board member Tiaris comment of just. Sure, I'm concerned about where all of these children will be going to school. Uh, Kapolee is. Pretty tight already.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know that we do have a lot of new elementary schools coming, but I'm not hearing about new middle schools and high school, secondary schools for all of these children. Thank you.
Um, I, again, I think these folks are going to be coming before you. At some point, yeah, it's part of the requirement. And so you folks can ask them about. That at that point, you know, um, hopefully they're going to address it. I I think they are. Supposed to in some manner, yeah.
Okay, we'll look forward to see how they're going to address the the problems that we've consistently raised. The new developments, so.
And yeah, and I can, I can, Chair, if you want to contact information for these folks, I can. Send them along to you, so.
That'll be great. We'd love to have them come out because especially if they are going to go before HHFDC again in order to get. Additional resourcing for this, we would probably want to address our concerns, not just to them, but to HHFDC about. The global plan in the Kapolee area, which because. It's not the responsibility of this developer to address the the school bookers, you know, for the Kiki. It's not their necessarily problem to address the global problems that we're having with all of the traffic patterns. But. Then the question is, what is their part, right? And we have to work with agencies like yours that has global control over the area. Of Boca or the villages of Kapolee to try and address that.
Okay, we'll talk.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. Okay, the Chair recognizes community member Thad Sprague.
Uh, excuse me. Hello, good evening. Uh, a question and a comment. Uh, you mentioned a couple minutes ago that there is a master plan for Kapolee. Where can we see that?
Kapolee master plan?
Yeah, I'd love to take a look at that document.
I will dig it up and.
Just actually.
Send it to you if you want.
Awesome. And my comment is that there have to be a million better uses for this piece of property than putting more houses on it, which is simply something we just, we just don't need at this point. As as much as we need several other things and I'll stop at that. Thank you.
Would you suggest?
Oh, that's a laundry list of things that we don't have time for here.
Goes there, hey?
Thank you. Um, maybe you can compile a list for for the transportation committee. Parts committee and the other committees, the environmental justice committee for presentation, because you don't operate. Okay. The the city of Kapolee plan is on the DBED site for the White State government, so um everyone can like access it from the DBED. Department of Business. And tourism, economic development and tourism. Is the city of Kapolee um plan.
Try to find you folks a link before the end of the meeting.
That'd be great. Okay, um, now we have. Community member Hanson. Mara Hanson, go right ahead.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions, um, Mr. Pang. I I echo. The um two board members who brought up. Your housing, um, but even more so, I. Would encourage that the city, state, whatever agencies that are involved in this development. Um, start mandating. You want to build X number of homes, then there will be X number of children. So we need X number of schools to house them in. Make it the developers kuliana. For the for the opportunity, right, to make that money. Sorry, there's um, there's an emergency vehicle in the background. I'm going to mute for a second.
Uncle Gordon, um, community member Hanson brings up a good question about how the education fees work with HCDA coordinated properties. Like whether or not they're being exempted from those fees or whatnot, but also understanding that the education fees for every development per residence doesn't necessarily. Actually go back to developing in that district. So. Um. So they might be putting money into the pot, but that that resources is, from my understanding, not necessarily directly tied to. so they might be putting money into the pot, but that resources is, from my understanding, not necessarily directly tied to benefiting the the children in those particular neighborhoods that are developed. That's why the need for.
Excuse me. In other words, yeah, tho- those decisions are still made by the Board of Education.
Yeah.
Okay.
But no, those are legitimate issues, for sure.
But well, it's good to know that there is some kind of there is some kind of connection between the two, but it 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 really needs to go more hand in hand because we're seeing the results of all the houses being built here in the fastest-growing area in the state, but not the schools being built. Secondly, you mentioned that there's gonna be, you know, affordable housing limits for the rental and for the purchasing side. And I have concerns that people will move in to especially the purchased homes, and they might be in those income categories. And I'm all for a ladder up. I actually received a ladder up. I bought my first house in Houston with a down payment assistance loan at zero percent interest that was that was forgiven after ten years. But if I had sold that home within the first ten years, I would have had to find someone else in the same income bracket that I was in when I bought it. So there were stipulations on having to own the home X number of years to be forgiven, and it basically was then kind of forced to be a benefit to people in those kind of income categories for at least ten years. And I worry, as a I have worked in real estate before, I've worked in property management management before, even of low-income or income restricted housing. And my concern is, how can we keep this affordable? Can are there any restrictions on the use or on the sale to the next person? Anything like that, so that this doesn't just turn into a government helping to to fund building of houses, yes, but, you know, people who needed the help right away, turn around and sell it to 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 rich folks from out of town, basically.
Yeah, as I understand it, this does have a buyback provision as well. So you you would also have to retain it at you you also have to stay there for ten years or allow us the opportunity to take it back and and sell it at affordable rates for the remaining time, yeah.
Okay, good to know that it's at least a ten-year period. It would be better if it was longer, but it's it's good that it's at least.
The rentals are seventy-five years, you know. So.
Okay. Any other community questions or concerns?
And I we did post a link to the the master plan.
Awesome. Thank you for the link for the master plan. Okay, the only question that I have right now, Gordon, is like, as HHFDC is, I know, responsible for the villages of Capole, but have have the has the board considered whether or not doing a property swap with the city or with Campbell that's in the walkable zone of the proposed West Capole Station? That has not been decided whether or not we're gonna have a west station, but we know it's not gonna be by Walmart if we're gonna make another one. The we do know that there's plans for potentially having a west Capole train station closer to the judicial complex. Has has the HHFDC considered doing a swap with? Or is that outside of their purview at this time?
I think the route is up to the city Department of Transportation Services. If I recall from my city holidays, it's supposed to go to that so-called Musubi Lot across the street from where you are.
Right, right, the Musubi Lot.
So that would take it away from that side. I don't know. I mean, I guess it would have to go over the houses to get to that location. You're talking about the the location here.
Because they can't come to the north side anymore, right? The Malka side of villages of Capo. It's just not possible without eminent domain of most of the current places. So there's like probably only one place if we're gonna have a west station. So I'm just wondering if you're gonna do mid-rises, would it not make more sense to make mid-rises closer to the potential station rather than right there on the corner of the most congested intersection of Capole? Wondering if it's even the purview of HHFDC to consider such.
It's not.
Okay, no worries. You guys are tight, too. Okay, thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing what the developers have to say.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Uncle Gordon to take back to the governor's office? Other than potentially considering land swaps? Okay, hearing none, let's go to now Representative Souza. She's joined us.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, everybody. I'll just keep it brief. The legislative session is winding down. We I think we have another solid, like, four or five weeks. And we've been very productive so far. Lots going on. And just a couple of things. We had our crime town hall with Prosecutor Steve Alm on March twentieth. Thank you to everyone who showed up and just it was a nice opportunity for everyone to just ask the prosecutor questions and kind of hear updates on some important things that he deemed noteworthy to share, such as current legislation with the marijuana bill. Thanks also Mick and your wife for showing up, and I appreciate your questions and engagement that night. Also, the second thing is we got a speed bump on Palai La and Ani Piahhi. And that is operational as of today, from my understanding, from talking to a lot of the community members, it's been over a decade that they've been asking for it. And so I'm very thankful to my staff for continuing to push this issue from last year. It seems simple to to just, you know, put a speed bump there, but I didn't realize just how complex getting a speed bump would be and just a lot of the the different rules and the bureaucracy a little bit that was involved. So I'm so grateful to everyone who stepped up and made this happen. So I went up there today, and it looks like people are slowing down. So this is a good start. I know there's more that's planned for that little stretch stretch of road by the by Maka Fila Elementary, so we'll see what's gonna happen in the next few weeks to further curb the speeding. So I'm very proud of that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Representative Souza, especially with helping us to get the speed hum on Palai La Street.
Yes, yes.
No worries. It's a technical term. We don't want anywhere. Everybody's gonna go like five miles per hour. Excellent. Thank you so much for your good work and that of your team.
Thank you.
Any questions for the representative or comments for her? Seeing none. Oh, transportation chair, right ahead.
Yeah, the only comment I had is that she put together a very good town hall. It was presented well. It was received well. A lot of our constituents showed up. And I look forward to more in the future. It was really effective, I thought.
Thank you, Mick. Appreciate appreciate it.
Yep.
Awesome. And with that, thank you for your report. Seeing no other questions or concerns, now let's get to board business. I'm taking action first on the approval of the written summary for video record Wednesday, February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. Are there any amendments? Hearing no amendments, chair recommends passage as is. Is there a motion?
A motion.
It's been moved by member Ferrera and seconded by member Lindstone to adopt the written summary for record for Wednesday, February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four as circulated. Any discussion? Anyone wishing to testify? Hearing none? Emotion carries unanimous, the chair calls it. Now we go to the support of game rooms package. There are three items, Bill fifty-seven, Bill fifty-eight, and Resolution twenty-three two-two-two-eight. At this time, we will take them in gross for public testimony. First one up is community member Patrick Watson for his manao. Uncle Patrick, you still with us? This is the time to talk about this one, if can.
Okay, I am. Thank you, Chair. And yes, I would like to voice my support for the Bill fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and the resolution that you folks are drafting. And I did want to point out that you did mention in the draft the effort called Operation Firestorm. And my son, who's with HPD, is concurrently running an operation called follow-through. And it doesn't get much publicity, but to date, Operation Follow Through has closed eighteen game rooms permanently since let's see. Let's see, technically started January twenty twenty-three. And ten game game rooms have been closed since January of this year. He's in the Kaliki District. So I just wanted to make mention of that. He works very hard to try to get this accomplished. And some of the language in one of the bills directly correlates with some of the efforts he's been doing with the DPP. So I just wanted to make mention of that because in your resolution, you stated that Operation Firestorm closed a room, but there's still activity present. And Operation Follow Through has been hundred percent success rate closing game rooms using a different technique. So that is my feedback and mahalo for allowing me to speak.
Mahalo. Chair's inquiry or questions for the the testifier? Anyone have questions from the board? Hearing none, the chair asks Uncle Patrick Watson, is there specific language that you would like to see to denote that, or is the draft as as written sufficient?
You know, I don't necessarily have any suggestion on how to modify the draft other than to just state what I just mentioned, that you mentioned Operation Firestorm, and I just wanted to make it known that there's another operation in place that's been a hundred percent effective, so. And that's Operation Follow Through. Okay?
The recommendation is to amend the draft to recognize Operation Follow Through at a hundred percent, which is good to hear. Because you're absolutely right. It has not been publicized.
All right, mahalo for your time.
Okay, excellent. Any other testifiers on the package as a whole? Hearing none. The chair now goes to the board for discussion. Yes, Chair recognizes Vice Chair Dr. Kialne Dutton.
I'm sorry to be so out of it, but I have no idea what this is all about.
Okay. No problem. So let me refresh everyone what we're actually going through and talking about. And I think the easiest way to do that will probably be to read off the proposed draft letter. So the context is that Representative Andrea Tupola, our council member, has been working with her colleagues at the council to try and address the game rooms' concerns across the island and particularly on the west side. We also have issues of game rooms here in Capole. And one has been closed down from one of the previous operations that was not as successful, but apparently Operation Follow Through now, we've been noticed, has been more successful. So here's what this is doing. The overall context is that the resolutions call for ways for better implementation of techniques and working interagency with HPD and on different agencies of the city to address the issues around game rooms, not just the people that are enacting, but the landlords and the types of crime that happens around game room establishments from human trafficking to drugs and gun violence. So here's the draft letter, which if approved, will be sent to the city council members saying that we support those resolutions that provide for different techniques to be engaged. So urging the hearing and passage of the game rooms' package, dear council chair Tommy Waters and council members, the Maka Kilo Capole Homakai Holland Neighborhood Board number thirty-four supports Bill fifty-seven, Bill fifty-eight, and Resolution twenty-three twenty-two eight. The board urges the council to hear this package of bills and pass them. The game rooms' package would provide additional tools for the Honolulu Police Department and other city agencies to deter and shut down the illegal game rooms plaguing our neighborhoods. Bill fifty-seven would create additional penalties, including up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fines for landlords who allow game rooms on their properties. And Bill fifty-eight would allow greater collaboration between HPD and the Department of Permitting and Planning to address the ills of illegal game rooms. And Resolution twenty-three two-two-eight urges the city agencies designated to enforce the sitting building, fire, and zoning codes to work with HPD in gathering evidence and the serving of notices of violations for the building codes, fire codes, and land use ordinance violations for these properties that are hosting illegal game rooms. Illegal game rooms have become commonplace in our neighborhoods, bringing insect trafficking, drugs, and gun violence into our midst, even with the most recent crackdown on illegal game rooms, including in Capole during May twenty twenty-three. Operation Firestorm, our neighborhoods, or sorry, our neighbors, report that such activity still persists, like here in our area. The board urges the the hearing and passage of Bill fifty-seven, Bill fifty-eight, and the Resolution twenty-three two-two-eight. Mahalo for your kind consideration. Sincerely, Chair. So there's two different bills. The first one is basically allowing for finding of landlords who allow this activity to happen on their property up to a hundred fifty thousand, rather than the police just arresting someone based off of whether or not there's electronic gaming or illegal possession of a firearm, because there's no rule or regulation for operation of game rooms in particular that they can arrest them on. So we're trying to hit the landlords as well, the people that are profiting off of the space. And the the other resolution and bill is really to encourage the coordination between the different agencies with HPD to provide evidence that they would need to prosecute. That's beyond their control right now and gathering capabilities. So those were in 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 short, what the game rooms' package is about, and our council member came to us last meeting to ask for our support. That is the overview, and now we are open for discussion amongst the board members to continue the discussion. Oh, excuse me. Before that, the chair recommends approval of the package and begs a motion to support. Whether or not we vote to support it is a different matter, but for us to discuss, we should have a motion on the table. Moved by board member Ferrera and seconded by board member Bosler. We are in discussion. Yeah, go right there.
This is very minor, but there were some grammatical errors on that draft.
Sure.
Just make sure we clean that up before it becomes a final copy. Apologize, former teacher.
I noticed it.
No problem. If you flag them, they're non-substantive. I would take that as administrative. Other than the spell check from from human from human eyes, any other discussion on or against any concerns from the board members in supporting the package? Chair recognizes board member Moon Kahelik, right ahead.
Good evening, Chair. Well-written document. Should there be like two subparagras within that to distinctly separate one from the other? To distinctly separate one from the other? Can you hear me?
I'm barely. Can you speak up?
Barely see.
Or send the message to via chat so we get confirmation. Either way. All right. I got something about like paragraphs and separating, which I would also take as a. Non substantive administrative issue. Wish we could word Smith. Is there any substantive concern that he's trying to? Because we could spend the next hour over here editing by committees. And you can send me all your edits afterwards. Okay, while we're waiting for if to determine if there's any substantive concerns, is there any other concerns generally from the board? I do believe that these resolutions and bills were introduced not just by our council member, but also in tandem with council member. Tyler Dos Santos Tam. Was also then hit hard with his area with game rooms.
So what member Kahela said is should the document be separated to determine one from the other topic? And I think he means in regards to should there be separate letters for Bill fifty seven, Bill fifty eight and the resolution? Or should it be one letter for the whole package? I think it's, I think it's, is that now what you're saying then?
So the the chair understands board member Moon Kala that your. Your inquiry is regarding whether or not we should have one letter for the whole package or three separate letters for the specific. Bills fifty seven, fifty eight, and resolution twenty three two two eight. So is that correct? Okay. So the the chair's inclination is that if we pass all three of them, then we need one letter. If we don't. Pass all three of them because there's concerns with them, then we will. Tailor them to whatever we pass. Okay, so right now we're actually discussing the. Package, which is Bill fifty seven, fifty eight, and Resolution two two twenty three, two two eight. If there's any. Or one of those that we do not wish to consider, then the letter would be. Modified to address such, but the first action is if we're okay with three, then. We will have a letter that speaks to all three. If we're only okay with one, then we'll have a letter that speaks to one. And if you really want three letters, I I I request us assistance in getting them done. Before we make the request to send them off from our neighborhood board assistant. Hey, Chair recognizes board member Vice Chair Dr. Kilni Dudley.
I think it all looks good. I think one letter is fine and. I I I'm glad to see this. I support it.
Okay.
Yeah, just real quickly, voice that numerous neighborhood boards around the island have voiced their support for this and for the most part, it's been one letter, one resolution, kind of. Identifying the three as a package.
Okay. If there's no other questions, concerns, or discussion from fellow board members, Chair's recommendation is to pass the. Game rooms package, Bill fifty seven, fifty eight. And Resolution twenty three two two eight. So our. Action is to support the package, all three. Are there any no votes? Are there any abstentions? Hearing none, the chair calls it unanimous. Now let's go to C, authorizing the letter of support for the game rooms package and the draft that was read earlier. Is there any public testimony on the? Draft letter? Calling once, calling twice, calling three times, hearing none, Chair's recommendation is to. Is to. Authorize the draft letter circulated with the non substantive. Edits recommended previously. Is there a motion? So it's been moved by Dr. Dudley, seconded by. Doctor Bossler, the doctors. Is there any discussion? You're too late to draw. Hearing no further discussion from board members, Chair says all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Any abstentions, they can all, hearing on the chair calls it unanimous again. And the chair also begs those that have editorial suggestions to please send them my way. So that I can take them to account before we get it circulated. Appreciate it. Awesome. Now let's go to. Resolution. Item D, which is supporting the continuous monitoring of toxic emissions from the city's H power waste energy facility and the scrubbing of any toxins. That are higher than national standards or public health guidelines. So the context for this is that we did have a presentation before by Mr. Ewall that came Esquire. And share with us the concerns around incineration generally and H power in specific. And we've learned a number of things, including that there's only testing of less than ten toxins and only four at a continuous base. So the resolution in brief basically itemized what's going on and are concerned with. The lack of continuous testing and asking for it to be done and mostly specifying that we want. Testing of heavy metals, as was actually mentioned earlier tonight. From our presenter regarding the concerns around fish farming. So. The resolution has been circulated. Is there any public testimony? On the resolution? Hearing no public testimony, we did hear lots of comments from the community in support from this concept earlier. Just now drafted it up for approval. Including the fact that in the resolution, it mentions that there was legislation at this state legislature this past cycle, but it didn't get through. Because of different concerns or opposition from people on technical issues. But this letter really just specifies our position that we should be monitoring whatever is coming out of the stacks from H bar. According to EPA guidelines and public health best practices. Okay, hearing no one wishing to testify at this time, Chair's recommendation is to pass the resolution. As circulated, is there a motion to?
Chair, I had a quick question. Sorry, it's Tiara.
Go right ahead, board member. Sure.
Are we not already monitoring this? Did I miss that?
So. What we are monitoring right now is only four air contaminants, NOx, SOx, CO and CO2. We don't monitor. Almost everything else, including ammonia, dioxins, tirones, polychlorinated bytenols. Per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, which we already have a resolution saying that we don't want that in our water. Why should it be in our air?
Why are we not monitoring it? Why do we have to write this letter? It, I mean, I'm sorry. I don't mean to be facetious. I really want to know. Why do we have to write this letter? I mean, I'm going to support it for sure because you should be monitoring it. I'm just wondering how we got to the point where we're not actually doing it. Because it seems like an obvious thing to do.
So it's. I shouldn't say that they're not monitoring, but they're only monitoring to what is legally required right now. But as was as we have discussed previously, policy and public health guidance don't necessarily track. And best practices and experiences of community, there's a, there's a lag. They wasn't monitoring asbestos for quite a while. And then finally the law's caught up, right? Like. So we're basically saying in our resolution that we should be not monitoring these things that we don't want in our water and our air. That we already know causes problems. But we don't test for them. So we're asking for it to be tested now. Yes.
Okay, yeah, it makes sense to me. I mean, not that we don't do it already, but that we're asking them to do it. Okay, sounds good. Sorry, I have to clear it up.
No problem. Yeah. Just like was stated earlier about our. Marine biologist or biologist friend talking about heavy metals. It's like, we don't really test for most of the heavy metals in the air that's coming out of H bar.
That's comforting to know.
But they do, they do annual tests for seven other potential toxins, but there's only annually. We're asking for continuous, but even if we only get every month. That will be much better than right now.
Just got to keep the contaminants low on those days they tested one one time per year.
That's. That's what the literature says about the the problems with. Timestamp monitoring is that it doesn't actually have an accurate account of what's going on three sixty five, twenty four, seven.
Yeah, a lot of averages or something.
Okay, so. A question before we get to the motion, here, go right ahead.
Or can we connect this to the vote we had a few months ago about the landfills? And the potential future landfills coming over. To this side of the island because we were, we talked about, we have the dumping grounds and we have people with various cancers and illnesses and. Oh, my gosh. I apologize, the inhaler inhaler that use asthma.
Asthma, yeah.
Yeah, that are. I think this, my, my, sorry, my point is that I believe this monitoring would help the case for our leeward coast communities if we have. We can show the amount of toxins coming into our areas from H power from our landfills. And then have more information to. To help when they're talking about payments or repayments. So, thank you.
Okay, so if I understand your questions, whether or not we can link this to a previous vote and the answer in short is. Yes, we can, if that is the wish of the board to make a more direct link. I do think in our previous resolutions that we've passed. Regarding the health crisis and issues around landfills, we do note H power in our and the ash concerns already in that resolution. This resolution specifically just speaks to the fact that we're not monitoring continuously. Over fifty toxins and air pollutants that we can with current technology continuously monitor. It it seems backwards, but I agree with your assessment, but we could save that for the discussion side. Any other questions about the resolution or what we're trying to do at this time? Hearing none. Yeah, Chair just wants to mention that this is in the scope of the things that we've been talking about for quite a while. We're just itemizing an action that we could potentially. Get them to do better. And having information for the community would be super helpful. Okay. Chair, again. Recommendation is to pass as circulated. Is there a motion? To adopt?
I move.
It's been moved by. Board member Tala and seconded by. Yeah, I'm taking.
I can't get you.
My board member on mic over here, right off. Thank you. You got it. Is there any discussion from the board members? Hearing no discussion, again, Chair just notes that this is in the longstanding conversations we've been having over the last few years about public health. And the Kona Kona Dombi grounds of West Oahu and the ill effects of our opala on our communities. And this resolution is really about more information. Even if it's just for peace of mind, it will be really good to know whether or not these toxins are being dispersed. Okay. Hearing no further discussion from the board, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed say no. Any abstentions, say connoisseur. Hearing on the chair calls it unanimous. Congratulations, gang. We were extremely. Productive on board actions. We got three, two bills, one resolution, one draft letter and one other resolution of our own done this evening. This is what happens when you have one presentation. As opposed to three. Okay, here we go. Now let's go to our committee reports for the home stretch, starting with Transportation Committee and Chair Ferrera.
Oh, I did that presentation basically earlier, kind of. Express my wants and desires.
Sure.
So, yeah, I guess the rundown from the town halls that we had was that. Our Maka Keel extension is being worked on, so to speak. And we were updated on some of the things that are going in around our community for traffic mitigation. And then we also got some. Updates from our elected officials as to some of those. Being done. So for now, it's just a matter of. Moving forward, and like I said, I'm going to be trying to meet with SHPD. In regards to the cultural artifact out of White Holy Ditch as it affects the Maka Keel extension. So. For now, that's it.
Thank you and thank you for. Doing that. The the question I have is do we need to do a permitted interactive group for. The Transportation Committee if they, if this just the chair inquiry and we shift the for that.
No, no, absolutely, absolutely not.
Okay, guys.
Community members and so.
Yeah, just checking checking on to be sure we're kosher. Okay. Any questions for the Transportation Committee Chair? Okay, Uncle Frank, Chair recognizes you. Go right ahead.
Yeah, if I could just chip in something, that discussion on the area across from Walmart. With the state pushing all those homes. The congestion is going to be even worse at that same place. And Chair Ferrara has tried to get the state to take over. The extension, maybe some kind of a direct approach to the governor, say, look. You're creating this problem, but you're not helping us solve the problem of traffic management. Just my two cents on that.
Well, and and you know what? That that was something that I was pushing earlier in trying to. Instead of it being the Maka Keel extension, being the north-south road extension, going up to the top of or to the end of Maka Keel. There is a map that I saw that shows a a road that goes up through the Grace Pacific property or along the perimeter. And it would basically connect to a lower street that is not. Is not designed to be able to carry a heavy traffic load. But if they were to take that road and align it to the Maka Keel, the end of Maka Keel Drive. I think that probably half of our project would already be in place. It'd be just a matter of paving. And then instead of four thousand linear feet of road, having maybe less than a thousand of it. And I'm kind of taking a look at that possibility. But the one thing that that was kind of a bump we hit in the road was a cultural artifact issue. And I'm trying to get some clarity on that because I definitely don't want it to be something that's destroyed or or, you know. I've got to have respect for that and the the common good of twenty thousand residents up there too has to be respected. So we have to balance. All of the needs of the stakeholders up there. So. There's a couple of options I'm looking at. I'm trying to take care of a couple of issues that are sticking points. But yeah, I I have approached it in a way that. Would make it a state project and. You know, I'm I'm thinking that because of the fact that the state has to approve funding along with city and county, it still may be a possibility. And if I'm not able to get any traction within the next twelve months with city and county on this. And they're looking at just going with an alternative like our our council member had indicated. As a, as an endpoint, I know that wasn't what her intention was, but for the immediate need. For emergencies, opening up, you know, access into the Gray's Pacific property. You know, going forward, it it might be something that I go and insist that we we go to the state with. The the final plan C is is to get together a number of the residents and some that have suffered loss. And to file a class action lawsuit to force. The the building of it, but that isn't even on the table right now, but. Just in exploratory phase.
But Thad Thad pointed out on the chat room that the map. Gordon Pang you shows the Maka Keel Drive extension. That map, by the way, is the one that's in the Kapole magazine from January of nineteen ninety three.
I also took a picture of work of the the neighborhood plan or the, I guess it was. I I also took a picture of work of the the neighborhood plan or the, I guess it was the plan for Kapale. And it was a copy of the map on the wall actually showing the Ma'akikiyo extension. It showed north-south road as being in dotted lines as being a future road. And it actually showed the Ma'akikiyo extension as an existing road on the on on the map, and we had the two of those maps on the wall at work at the DLNR and and people weren't even aware that it wasn't even built. And when I brought that up and they're looking at the map and talking about it and I'm going, well, that that road doesn't exist, they go, well, no, sure does, it's here on the map, and I go, I can take you out there and show it, but it it isn't there, so. That that particular map, I think at the time, was Kapale Area Long Range Master Plan, estate of James Campbell. And that is July of nineteen ninety-three. Halbert, Astor and Fee planners, so, yeah, it's something that, it also shows the golf course up there too, we know that's not theirs.
Right, we don't know.
Anyway.
Okay.
Good times.
Any other questions for the transportation committee?
Yes.
The chair recognizes vice chair Dr. Kili Dudley.
What is the cultural thing that is a problem? It's a Wa'ohli ditch and it is, there's several ditches throughout, you know, Oahu, and we've had to deal with a lot of them with different projects we've worked on at the DLNR. And from what I understand, this Wa'ohli ditch, as a matter of fact, was utilized to irrigate sugarcane at some point, so it kind of left the kind of left the original purpose of it and was commercially used to irrigate sugarcane, so. While remaining, you know, culturally sensitive to to that, I think that there's a way like we have done with other projects where we've worked around it. And I did remind the the town hall that in fact Sam's Club and Walmart downtown is built on on a EV cemetery, right? So I'm not looking to to try to do anything of that scale, maybe creating something that we go over it or or something like that, there isn't even really any access to the public. And if somehow we could take the Ma'akikiyo extension and make it to where people could actually go to the Wa'ohli ditch and see it, where they don't have access to it at all now, might even, you know, present a double benefit there. Maybe if there's a turnoff or something on there that, you know, for people to have a a vista view of you know, Pearl Harbor and the city and then also having, you know, a marker for the Wa'ohli ditch. Those are some ideas that I've kind of got spinning in my head to be able to be able to accomplish that, so. There's a lot of balls in the air and it's just a matter of, you know, kind of getting them all to fall together, so.
Awesome, thank you so much for the continued good work. And I'm really intrigued by the potential of the north-south road and meeting up with Ma'akikiyo Drive Extension, one in the purview of the state and the other in the purview of the city, if they can figure it out and work out the details to try and collaborate in order to make that happen. I'm also thinking about the state projects that we've heard about today. We put into traffic mitigation, but also DLNR came before us earlier. For right there on the north-south road by West Oahu campus, they're planning to build out affordable housing and homes, so like it's potentially part of the state's school, they're on the for regional traffic mitigation, it might make sense to actually build this out.
And as a matter of fact, our project planners sit directly across from me and we discuss it every day. So I'm right on top of that project, I don't speak of it much, but yes, that is something.
Awesome.
DLNR is is fervently promoting, which is, I think, kind of usually outside of our our purview and 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 working on, so. You know, that that is something I think might be something that could kind of be added in. In fact, it's those people that I'm talking to about the SHPD issues, because they've had to deal with it on other projects.
Nice, well, we look forward to the continual updates and hopefully presentation of a successful solution for our communities, right? Okay, let's go now to Parks and Recreation Chair, Lindstone.
I'm working with Tupula, continually working with Tupula on Kapale Regional Park. She's just been really great in moving things forward. To answer Amy's question earlier, there is a new director for Leeward Parks. And so he's newly on board and and moving forward in that respect. And if I may say, Chair Paris, I'm just really appreciative of this board and the showing at the mayor's town hall. And just the leadership of this board and those who showed up for the topics that are just so important that we bring up time and time again, that were brought up again to the community. I have so much pride in this board, I was there earlier with my students, they did the Vehana. I had to leave early because I did have my students. I didn't get to talk and I was kind of bummed on the parks issues, but to see those who came out, I must say, just very grateful.
Thank you, any questions for the Parks Chair? Or comments, hearing none, let's go to the Chair for Environmental Justice Committee, Dr. Dudley.
Nothing to report.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for your continued work that you're doing on disaster preparedness. So I would like to remind our committee chairs, if there's any requests that you have or ideas for budget proposals and the on-the-ground work that you're doing, that we should make known to our councilwoman. Please do let me know so we can agendize that as the official position of our board. If you have things like for transportation, if there is a desire for the city to work with by putting in money to provide a coordinated yeah, for that, we should probably put that into a request to a council member and the council and the mayor. And if there's anything else that wasn't already covered for the regional park that you think will be beneficial or any of the other parks that we should take an official position on, please let me. Okay. Thank you, committee chairs for your continued work and Dr. Dudley for the permitted interaction group. Continue to work on the clarification of the quarry and end-of-life concerns. And with that, the final announcement is our next scheduled meeting will be on April twenty-fourth at seven PM, unless we change the time. Seven PM still works for everybody, okay, good. And with that, mahalo nui loa, everyone for attending in person and online and to my fellow board members, keep up the good work. And to our community members, keep bringing us your insight, your solutions and the pili kia that we need to address. You have a wonderful rest of your evening, everyone, mahalo, kefu. The meeting is.
Mahalo.
Yeah.